Again, thank you to everyone who's here today and participating in this conversation. We're going to continue with the presentation of information, so I will turn this back over to Ms. Damon. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope everybody enjoyed the good eats and you are now satisfied and moved around a little bit, got the blood flowing again, because here we go. I'll be brief as I possibly can. Man, tough crowd. Alright, let's go to miscellaneous contracts. This is the next chapter in your draft transition plan, miscellaneous contracts. So those are comprised of four main subject matter areas, building removal. So the contracts related to building removal are in that miscellaneous section. The veteran cemetery contracts, there are some contracts about that. Judgment settlement agreements and RITs, we've put those in this section. So there are settlement agreements with California State University. There's some RITs regarding the campus master plan from way back when. Those are all in this section. And finally, the pending litigation. If there's any resolution judgment, those will be in this section as well. I'm gonna try to put this over here. So, let's do that little analysis. What is it that we do? Well, with respect to building removal, we do a certain amount of base-wide building removal. And we do that because of board policy. There were certain jurisdictions that got lots of buildings and the board decided at a certain point that some portion of those buildings should be born on a base-wide basis. And so FORA's obligation is that part that the board has designated. And it's mainly in City of Marina and the City of Seaside, but the County of Monterey also had some building removal that occurred within its jurisdictional boundaries under this program as well. The veteran cemetery contract is in there. That is an entry by board policy and there's a contract. It most likely will not be completed prior to 2020 and it's anticipated that we would assign any outstanding obligation to the underlying jurisdiction. That most likely would be the City of Seaside and the County of Monterey. So there are some habitat management obligations that go hand-in-hand with that contract and some commitments that we made in that contract. Settlement agreements, the RIT, we do those by court direction and contract. They will continue post-2020. Enforcement will be kind of an issue. We intend to assign follow-up review to a successor. So in the instance of California State University, the City of Marina was a co-litigant with the Fordord Reuse Authority, so they would be the most likely successor to that particular agreement. Or it might be shared with the City of Marina and the City of Seaside, both of whom have some portions of the California State project within their jurisdictional boundaries. Pending litigation, board policy, law, we've been sued, we're in the middle of suing or defending lawsuits. Most likely, those lawsuits, while we're hopeful, they would be completed prior to 2020. It's possible that they won't be, or it's possible we will be involved in new lawsuits. You just don't know, because you don't know what you don't know and lawsuits are one of those things. Saying it's not likely that the two main lawsuits that we're involved in will be completed prior to 2020. One might, the other one might not. And the option would be to assign to a successor to direct the litigation and to allocate costs based on whatever the outcome is of that lawsuit. So there are two main lawsuits we have and they're shown on our agenda for the 2 o'clock board meeting. That is the KFO versus Fordord Reuse Authority, which involves environmental issues on South Boundary Road project. And then the other litigation is involving the contractual arrangements between City Marina Successor Agency, the Marina Community Partners, with respect to building removal and how those dollars are paid or repaid. There's no, those are in current litigation. So some of the key issues that were talked about in the TAC are who is FORA's successor for purposes of monitoring settlement agreements and RIT compliance? So where the RIT requires, for example, another entity like CSUNB to do certain things, who is going to make sure that they do those certain things? And who is the beneficiary, who's responsible for implementing the provisions of the RITs or the judgments that are out there? Excuse me. Who pays litigation attorney's fees and costs awarded subsequent to June 30th, 2020? So if there's litigation that extends beyond the sunset, how do we allocate those? Are they only to the land use jurisdictions? Do we want to go by the subject matter of pending litigation? Litigation by litigation, you have some issues to discuss there? Or do you want to try to get an insurance policy to cover costs? Who manages that pending litigation post-2020? Or does it just terminate? FORA's gone, therefore litigation's gone. No more lawsuit. Some of the considerations would be to assign the assets liabilities in accordance with the spreadsheets that are contained in the draft plan. Upon dissolution, any unsmitten FORA indemnification reserve accounts would be transferred to a post-FORA indemnification fund, say that 10 times really fast, to be administered by former FORA jurisdictions. Any additional FORA dollars might be transferred into that same escrow account for the indemnification fund. So during the budget planning for next year, there might be additional funds set aside depending on, maybe it's not just an indemnification fund, maybe it's called a litigation fund, something like that. And any obligations, liabilities, litigation, defense, settlement agreements, RITs that exceed the amount of funds available would become the responsibility of FORA jurisdiction. So we'd want to address those issues probably on a case-by-case or lawsuit-by-law lawsuit subject matter basis. So if lawsuit involved property or a construction project, you would assign it to the underlying land use jurisdictions. If it affected administrative-type liability, it would go in accordance with the administrative liabilities to everybody. For example, those are some considerations you might think about. Here's your side-by-side comparison. And basically, transition might provide some additional home rule flexibility in how you proceed forward on some of those issues. On the other hand, it could lead to additional litigation. Just depends. And there's uncertainty which could affect future development projects. On the other hand, extension, you have that regional forum, so you're in there collectively. You're looking at risk management and indemnification on a regional basis, so everybody is looking at it and managing it together. On the other hand, FORA is a target. Easy to sue FORA. Transition staffing, always staff's favorite subject to talk about, but here it is. So this is a historical slide. The FORA board has seen this slide before. It's just, don't pay any attention to the line. It's just showing a reduction in staff force as functions are transferred over time. As they get transferred, the need for certain staffing goes down. And those were the projections when we were looking at this last year. I think I showed this to the FORA board either in 2016 or 2017 as we did the presentation. This is what your staffing looks like today. On the left-hand side are the staffing people. And you'll notice there's 16.5 people that do the functions that are in the middle, showing what the main functions of your FORA staff are and how they're handling it in 2018. Now you'll note, this is on two pages. We have actual people of 16.5, so we have 16 full-time and a half-time person, but we're doing the work of 17.75. And the FORA board has recognized that workload misadjustment and has authorized additional staffing to help make that more equal. So what are your transition plan issues? Some of the issues that should be talked about are how are key employees retained to accomplish the sunset work plan? As we go forward, I can tell you right now, many of the employees have their heads up and are looking around. You don't know. It's uncertain future out there, so you always have to keep your head up. Consider a retention severance program. Employees completing those key functions maybe receive a retention bonus for completing and staying through sunset, so that you finish the work that you want finished prior to sunset. And functions which are no longer required, consider an early departure severance. And then how will post-sunset rampdown be accomplished? For example, who handles the revenue collection? Who handles the post-accounting functions, the W2s, the payroll records? Things that you don't do on June 30th, 2020. It usually takes several months to close your books. It's just like closing your books. How do you close the FORA's books? And who's gonna do that? And who's in the best position to be able to do that? Some of your considerations. Consider staffing to be managed by the executive officer with a human resources consultant to bring back a retention and reduction of workforce recommendation. Bringing in a professional helps separate the issues related to long-term employees out. Makes it a little bit easier to come back with a more neutral plan. And upon FORA dissolution, reduce FORA staffing to two FTEs, because I think the recommendation or the consideration here is that FORA staff is uniquely qualified to complete and wrap up all of the accounting stuff. But the alternative is you can either farm it out to paychecks or to an accounting firm to do the required auditing, or you might assign it to a jurisdiction who's willing to do it, like county does things like this all the time. So they might be willing to take on that obligation, or one of the other jurisdictions. And here's your side-by-side for transition staffing. You'll note that it's pretty equal, whether you transition FORA or whether you extend FORA, the staffing issues are virtually identical. And why is that? Well, as you transition, you still need people to finish the program. And this assumes that you're going to be finishing capital improvement program, that you need staff inside your cities, or increased staff or increased wages to do what needs to be done. You can't just absorb it. And in fact, that is what we see, because FORA staff is routinely asked to provide staff assistance for the jurisdictions to do certain things, like Oakwoodlands, for example, that was something that was not seen as having adequate city or county staff to be able to prepare the extra policies and analysis and coordination that needed to be done. And so FORA staff stepped in to perform that function. But as we move forward and we transition, it's likely that the CalPERS increase in the individual jurisdictions will increase based on who receives the work. Extension, virtually similar. As the functions are retired, we anticipate the staffing levels to go down pretty substantially. And we also anticipate that the CalPERS liabilities will be controlled by either contract amendments, termination, or new contracts. So once your terminated agency unfunded liability has been fully addressed and put into your 115 trust, future contracts can be kept pretty current and changes in policy can address those issues. And downside of extension in light of an amendment, so assuming that you either terminate CalPERS benefits moving forward or you amend the benefits that you currently offer to existing staff, some of your key personnel may not want to stay under those circumstances. So that's a potential downside in the staffing. Oh, that brings us to CEQA. Oh, you guys aren't even laughing about that. This is a very focused CEQA discussion and it's only the level of environmental review required for the transition plan. So here it is. Still no laugh. This is the CEQA process flow chart. And in fact, I'm hearing snores, the carbs are kicking in. It's complicated, but the bottom line is, you can see that there's a pretty long process if you have a project and you have to do either a negative deck or an environmental impact report. On the other hand, if you're up on the top and you don't have a project or it's a ministerial project, you don't have to comply with CEQA. In fact, we are recommending at this time that the board find that the transition plan is not a project. And why is that? In the CEQA guidelines, it defines that financial, organizational, or administrative activities of governments that don't result in a direct or indirect physical change in the environment are not projects. And that's 15378 in the CEQA guidelines. On the other hand, even if that is wrong, we're saying that it's a ministerial act, which means it's also not subject to CEQA. And why isn't approval of a transition plan, or why is it a ministerial act? Well, it's different from what you might do on a base reuse plan or how you exercise your discretion. The reason is, is because your authority act directs you. It mandates that you shall prepare a transition plan and submit it. So that's what distinguishes the transition plan from other types of actions that city governments or county governments take, is you normally don't take those actions pursuant to a direct governmental mandate. Thus, you don't really have discretion to not adopt a plan. It's ministerial, therefore preparation, approval, and submission is not subject to CEQA, because you are right up there in the top of the CEQA process flow chart. So, that brings us to conclusions and considerations. Policy considerations. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? I thought this would be a good time to talk about some of the four big, the biggest issues that we heard repeatedly in the transition task force and from others. Completing the economic recovery. What is it? What is it and when do we do it? What are those base-wide costs and base-wide mitigation measures? We've identified those as your capital improvement program. We believe the board has made findings about that that identify those as your base-wide costs and base-wide mitigation measures. Revenue generation. We've talked a lot about that today. Do you continue with the existing financing structure, which has some mini-benefits? Or do you create a new system of financing to try to replace that which you have? Revenue sharing. How do we share revenues between those that generate the revenues and those that provide the base-wide costs that are building the projects? How do you do that? How do you accomplish that? And finally, policy enforcement. What policies and how? Do we have prevailing wage policies? Consistency determinations. Base reuse plan policies. Jobs-housing balances. There are lots of policies that we have that are captured in the FORA master resolution and in the base reuse plan. Which ones? How do we enforce those? Who enforces them? Which ones rise to the top and are very important? We want to address which ones maybe we'd like to address, but we might just let them go to the land use jurisdictions. So here are your kind of options. We have the multi-agency function transfer, where you would take the regional transportation, you would offload that to the transportation agency of Monterey County. The jurisdictions would receive the off-site transportation projects. The onsite transportation projects, those are the ones that FORA is still building, would be assigned to underlying jurisdictions. Water augmentation goes to Marina Coast Water District, Monterey 1. Water rights and service to Marina Coast Water District, which they already have the water rights and services, so there's nothing new for you to do or assign. It's already by contract. Wastewater, Marina Coast Water District, Seaside Sanitation. I know that they have been working together to address their annexation overlap issues with respect to wastewater issues on the Oard community. Habitat Conservation Plan goes to the Habitat Cooperative. ESCA, County, ORA, JPA, the recommendation, but it could actually be County, Marina, Seaside, or JPA that is set forth in the ESCA contract. Building removal would go to jurisdictions and anything that's not funded by FORA would go to the jurisdiction. So we don't complete stockade, for example. That portion that FORA would have contributed to would be assigned to the underlying jurisdiction. Base reuse plan consistency, those determinations would be made by the jurisdictions as they approved projects. And administration PERS anticipated to be fully funded by 2020. Sorry, apparently my computer wants to talk to me. As are currently one year of indemnification. Potential indemnification for LAFCO has been set aside, identified in the 2018-2019 budget. So that's hopefully funded, at least for a year. Devolution. It was kind of interesting. Somebody was talking to me and they said, "I had a dream about devolution." And they said, "I envisioned this screen and it had a little devil on it, because of the devolution name." This doesn't have a devil. If I had thought about it, it would have been, you know, might be kind of cute. But this is a potential alternative. You should note that these are mutually exclusive. You might decide that maybe some combination of all of these are appropriate. Regional transportation goes to TAMSY and/or the jurisdictions to create the replacement funding. So instead of replacing the $30 million in the capital improvement program with a new TAMSY regional impact fee, the jurisdictions would just continue to pay into and complete the $30 million obligation. Off-site transportation goes to the jurisdictions. On-site transportation, either to the underlying jurisdictions or a JPA that would be comprised of those jurisdictions that have an interest in making sure those projects are completed. Water augmentation, pretty much the same as the other multi-agency approach. Marina Coast Water District jurisdictions to raise the funds potentially, so it's an either-or. Water rights service still go to MCWD, but if, yeah, that's fine. And wastewater, MCWD and/or Seaside Sanitation, there are notes that go hand-in-hand with those. Habitat Cooperative goes to the Habitat Cooperative/JPA. ESCA, JPA, or Monterey Seaside or Marina. Building removal jurisdictions for the FORA share. Base reuse plan consistency goes to the jurisdictions. And administrative PERS still fully funded by 2020. Begs the question, what's our third choice? Third choice is potential for act amendment. We heard a member of the public talk about a consideration that the board take what FORA does well and function transfer that which could be handled by another entity. Some issues to think about, board composition, you know, same or amended. Voting unanimous or majority first vote. And what kind of limited functions? Is it ESCA? Is it just financing, capital improvement program, policy compliance? Prevailing wage, base reuse plan, consistency determinations? You know, those are all things subject to discussion and negotiation. We did include a consideration in your draft transition plan to consider extending the FORA act for a limited purpose of ongoing financing, revenue sharing, revenue generation, sharing and prioritization, and unit students' response. So the ESCA function would stay under the FORA umbrella. And then with respect, that would be the legislative piece. And then negotiate additional modifications to FORA policies and structure separately as they aren't going to necessarily need state legislation to make modifications to those. So implement some changes to management structure via contract and limitation of liabilities via contract. And what does it look like for you to extend FORA? Well, guess what? Regional transportation projects are still going to be completed by TAMSY. FORA's extension is a revenue generation feature. So it would be the FORA funding. We would be writing a check to TAMSY when the funds come in, when the appropriate level of funding comes in. Same thing with off-site transportation. On-site transportation, FORA would complete its construction projects. Water augmentation, FORA would continue its funding stream, which would reduce the capacity charges that MCWD would be required to impose on its users. Water rights service, Marina Coast is already operating its water service system, but the FORA oversight would continue in terms of those areas that have not yet been annexed. So the facilities agreement would remain in play for that. Same thing for wastewater. Habitat Conservation Plan, FORA's funding CFD would continue and it would then direct funds either to Habitat Cooperative, if that's how, if that's in play, or it can be used to fund that alternative backup plan, if you will, of the long-term habitat management area endowment and the project-by-project issues. ESCA would be under the FORA umbrella. Building removal with a star. That means we would complete that base-wide chunk of building removal, but because you still have FORA in play, you have the ability to change your policies and you might decide that more than just the amount that we've designated to date should be considered to be a base-wide obligation and direct future land sales or other revenues toward more building removal instead of just the limited amount that has been designated to date. Base reuse plan consistency still falls under the FORA umbrella. Although, as we move through all the project, the main project approvals, the amount of times that we do consistency determinations is going to become less and less as the base and projects are implemented across the base. And we can already see that. We probably haven't had a consistency determination for over a year. So it's already becoming less and less. Administration PERS, fully fund the terminated agency liability, terminated agency unfunded liability by 2020 and then modify the contract with respect to employee contribution. So you don't have additional terminated agency liability if you were in an extension program. And we are to public comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members, clarifications for Ms. Damon on the material that's provided? And if you can tell us the slide number, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Page or slide 76/77. I want to mention just quickly a comment and then the question. The comment I have was, my comment was cut off when it was a bit editorial and subjective. And yet, here we sit for three hours patiently, having the slides read to us and being asked about why we find environmental quality funny. So I want to find out, why would we be expected to find environmental quality funny? Page 77 is the diagram and before that is many children's hands on the globe. And this is the point when we were all asked that we should find this funny. So I'm just asking, why should we find this funny? What is funny about environmental quality?
So Ms. Schreiner, I think that was just simply an offhanded comment intended as levity because of the complexity of the graphic.
So, as a director, I am not allowed editorial comment, but I can... So, as a director, I am not allowed editorial comment, but I can sit here for three hours listening to someone else's editorial comment?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, other comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, if you'll forgive me. I just want to thank you, Sheri, because, you know, I'm serious about this, Jen, it was really hard for you to sit here and do this presentation, and I really thank you for that. It was, it took a lot of focus, and I just want to preface our comments with that thought, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hale, did you have a comment?
Comment, perhaps, slash question under the extending FORA slide 86, it shows regional transportation FORA funding, that would be checks written to TAMSY. Maybe this is more of a comment than a question, but does that mean you'd be changing your local, local first policy, or is that, because we haven't, we haven't gotten any checks for a while.
I think, I think that's a open issue, that the, if FORA is extended, all policies are subject to review and revision by FORA, so I, I can't say whether that, other than to say that the FORA funding stream and the TAMSY regional transportation improvements, to the extent that they're shown in the capital improvement program, would continue, the revenue stream would continue. That's the only thing that that is saying. With respect to the change in policy, how those regional fees might be transmitted to TAMSY, I don't, I don't know that, I think that would be a board question.
And I think just, maybe, like I said, maybe it's more of a comment, just that one of the differences between extending FORA and having a devolution in which TAMSY handled the regional and/or off-site projects would be that that, those monies would flow more regularly towards those projects. That said, the FORA board would not be making decisions on the funding, so that's the trade-off.
Thank you. Any other question, comment? Yes, Mr. Hoffa.
On slides 82 and 83, which lay out transfer under multi-agency or devolution, my question is related to water rights and service for areas that have not been or will not have been annexed yet. Is it possible that for those areas, the transition plan would designate the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District as responsible until such time as Marina Coast annexes?
I think the executive officer would like to address that.
I, I think that could be an added consideration, but this is a Salinas Valley groundwater basin resource through MCWRA, even though the jurisdictions that would not be annexed are Monterey and Delray Oaks, but since it's an MCWRA agreement and resource to provide the water, it might have them, them included as well. We haven't looked at that as a consideration, but maybe it should be added.
Any other question? Ms. Parker?
Thank you, I have a question just about process. So I have sort of a general comment after hearing everything. You don't want that now, right? You want to just hear about these chapters, and then we'll do sort of general comments about everything we've heard, or after?
Yes, we'll get to the general comments in just a moment. I want to offer the public an opportunity also to comment on the last three segments that you all heard. So what I was asking for at this point is on the three segments that Ms. Damon just presented, are there any clarifying questions that you need her to answer at this point? Otherwise, we'll go to the public and ask if there are any comments that the public would like to make on those three items.
George Riley again, and thank you. I also want to compliment Sheri, this is a very complicated process, and you've done well, I think, trying to capture as much as you have. Anyway, I wanted to, on the board composition question, there were some suggestions in the, the committee structure, that, and it didn't show up in the report, and I just want to share with you some of that discussion. There was no consensus, so I'm not trying to even suggest that. But the discussion was land use agencies only, should be in the future board composition. There were several suggestions about the formula or the relationship of representation. 33311 was one of the suggestions, three from Marina, Seaside, and the county, and one and one from Monterey and Delray Oaks. Also, there was a 22211, a suggestion, same relationship, three big ones, three, three big jurisdictions would have two each, then the other ones. That's a total of 11, or a total of eight between those two. But also, there was a question about whether CSUMB would want to be in that process, and the way we understood the, the history at that, in, in the last meeting, was that CSUMB decided not to be a voting member back when this was formed years ago. And the question was whether they should be inquired, do they still hold that position, or do they want to change their position in order to have the discussion about its voting membership or not? Anyway, I just wanted to pass that along, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any other comments from the public? All right. Then let's bring it back to discussion among the board members, questions, comments, direction. You may want to talk about the options, you may want to talk about looking at each of the chapter sections, and the considerations that have been posed to you today. There may be some thoughts about the structure going forward. So we have 20 minutes for that start of discussion, and then second, and then I'll remind you, you can always submit written comments, and there is a question, yes?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It just, can you please remind me of the sort of sequence of events, the calendaring of events? Because you've brought up things that are really, there's a variety of ideas, but we've not started contractual agreements or anything, and of course, you know, the devil's in the details. But what's going to happen between, what are the series of events that need to happen for any of this to be actually a reality?
Well, I think the, the first step is getting an adopted plan, so assuming that we have a plan in December, and depending on what it says, you then would follow through after that. Now, we know that we have 24 months and 22 days left, so given that restriction, there are, is an awful lot of work to do if you're involved in negotiating agreements on the devolution of FORA. We have to start pretty much in January 1st and pray that Counselor Giffen is really honed his pencil, and has colleagues that would be able to assist him, because the inter-jurisdictional or agreements and other things would take quite a bit of time to get done. We already know that our colleagues at MCWD are ready to move. If given the responsibility and obligation, they believe that they have the authority to do the financing, they believe they have the ability to undertake those agreements, but on the water, there would be some work to be done, because the Army's agreed that this agency has the first right of refusal if the Army ever releases any of their retained water. That would require some agreements to get done. So that's just one example, but I can give you 10 examples. Instead of going through the other nine, I'll just say, there are nine more examples of agreements that might have to do with reimbursement agreements for roads, it might have to do with the water wastewater, the wastewater rights that MCWD has, and FORA has right of refusal on that. It may be the whole question about how you do agreements for future service in a certain area. So all of those things would require some time. Some of the things that you heard are already dealt with, to some extent, the liability for PERS. The board has addressed that early and often, the Finance Committee saw that as an issue when Gail was chair two years ago, we got on that. So, but in terms of getting it done, quite a bit of work. Now, if in part of this, the board makes a policy shift or change, then all bets are off. If you make a policy shift or change, and the transition plan includes some changing, now all of a sudden CEQA gets into the mix, and then it becomes an issue about doing CEQA next year, and the potential for something that stops or blocks that. So that, there's another timing issue associated with that. So my response is, it really depends on where the board is. If the board decides on a particular path, we as staff can engage immediately, may need some consulting help to get it done, or some legal help, but we believe that there's enough time to accomplish most of those agreements, barring...
You've given a very good specific input that policy changes from the board could make some of these potential agreements very difficult. What I'd like to hear is if there are any policy changes or agreements that would make it easier to do that. Anything that, that's, that we currently have, that we should look at in order to enable smoother transitions, better agreements. And I would also say for anybody that's party to anything up there, if you foresee that there are some hitches, I'm assuming that you're hearing from those folks early and often, just so we don't have, like, I know you're planning on us, but we're not going to deliver at the end of it, and we can do a lot to, upfront, to mitigate some of those ugly surprises, so I appreciate your, your walking me through that, thank you.
Great, May?
Thank you.
I appreciate.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor Gunther, you had comments?
Well, I want, I want to go to the Chair and to the, Mr. Hulamard. Any of these changes, such as FORA light, which I have always said it should have been to begin with, land use jurisdictions should have been holding their own destiny in their hands, versus us outsiders that give you water. I believe this would have to go back to the legislature for some changes of that matter, and we'd have to have a bill that could get through Sacramento, and how long would that take? You've only got 24 months, and the clock's running.
Mr. Hulamard?
I think that we've heard from Senator Manning that there's enough time, if we were to get something to him in January, to make that appeal. I don't know that he has said he guarantees an extension, and so it re, the approach we take matters, because if we all take the same approach, or similar approaches, or there's mostly unanimity, I think we have a chance of getting the legislation through. If we don't have that, it's going to make life hard on Senator Manning, is the way I perceive it from my experience working Sacramento folks. So there is enough time for that as well. I assume that he means that we could get a legislative adjustment, or fix, or whatever we wanted, if it's a very simple, simply shell extension, that probably could get signed sometime middle of next year, depending on who the governor is, but assuming all things, I think that's what Senator Manning was anticipating.
Ms. Schreiner?
Thank you. I do agree on a number of comments Mr. Hulamard made a few moments ago regarding Marina Coast Water District. We do take these things very, very seriously. We are preparing service agreements that could be considered as a group, or could be individual land use jurisdictions. We would like to consider an effective date into perpetuity unless mutually terminated, preserving existing groundwater allocation structure, preserving the existing recycle water allocation structure, and then the remaining allocations could be preserved beyond the FORA sunset. When it comes to beyond the base reuse plan, each jurisdiction would need to negotiate, you know, another project. You can't put the burden on the Marina Coast or any other water purveyor to provide water for anything, you know, beyond and above our dreams that we have today. So it's hard to know exactly what the future would be, but the District of Marina Coast would be willing to consider all solutions for Seaside, Sand City, Delray Oaks, beyond base reuse plan, as long as there is money analysis and project approval. So the, the District is definitely already working with attorneys, there is some concern about the idea of this first right of return for water that's not being used. Apparently, there's a 2001 agreement that has some language about all rights being in the hands of the Marina Coast Water District, so that's something staff and attorneys still need to, to discuss. There is a funding source capacity, charges that would go through the Marina Coast, the annexation process, you know, Marina Coast is currently working on with LAFCO, includes the properties that are already entitled. The other properties would have to be annexed through their land use jurisdiction, just as they would for any private or Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. It would all be the same kind of process that would have to be carried out straight sunset, happen. Then finally, there would need to be clarification between the role of the District and the role of the land use jurisdictions, as far as Marina Coast provides water for properly entitled proposals, as well as we would provide, the District would provide water standards, how, how to build, but not the enforcement. Your own land use jurisdictions would have some requirement for enforcing code, that would be the land use jurisdiction. Does that make sense? So we are prepared as a District to begin service agreements, the drafting, next week. We take this very seriously, and we believe that we can be more effective than what we've been seeing here at FORA so far. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Also, I encourage you to get comments to staff at any time, because we are going to run out of time. Mr. Hoffa?
So I believe in listening to my colleagues, and over the past several months, one of the things I've heard loud and clear from my friend Director Morton, is concern about the cost of the agency and building removal. Those are two of the things that I, I know are very important to her. So as I look at, and, and I, and I heard Director Garfield point out that we need to look at what can we take care of now, so that we don't have things sort of left hanging at the, at the end of 2020. One of those things is the HCP and the Habitat JPA. So I think I would encourage all of the jurisdictions to start, and I've had this conversation with our city manager and planning staff, that we need to start looking at that as soon as possible, because that is something that we could hand off if we all collectively get moving on it. But based on all of the input and listening to folks, to me, the, my, my major concern is the possible $72 million funding shortfall. And there may be other ways to address it, but at this point, it looks like that is going to be a serious challenge. And we know if we can continue FORA in some limited form, as I think Mr. Riley may have been suggesting, that we can continue the funding of the, of the current CFD. And so my thought is, post 2020, we should try to move towards the smallest agency as possible, like a four-person agency that would just deal with the financial and ESCA, and all other functions. Habitat would go to the JPA, water goes to Marina Coast, transportation goes to TAMSY. And that we would also look at changing the land sale, so that the land sale would go towards building removal, to address Marina's concern there, that all of the land sales, future land sales would go to building removal. If we don't accomplish something like this, then I think I would favor a devolution in which all of the liabilities, not just transportation, which we know would go to a nexus, but Habitat, transportation, building removal, I think all of that then becomes a jurisdictional nexus responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Supervisor Parker?
Thank you. Seems like this is an area we could have used more time. So I really appreciate the laying these things out. I think we've got a pretty, a pretty good picture here. My concern is the timeline. We need to have something for this board to vote, vote on by the end of the year, and I agree with really focusing on a JPA for the HMP and possibly the HCP, if that ends up happening. That's something we can get started on, I think, right away. But, you know, I've, I've mentioned several times, or I've asked, what conversations are going on with the jurisdictions that are being identified as possibly being assigned duties? As far as I can tell, certainly there are no direct conversations with the county happening, and that concerns me, because we're on the list quite a bit. So I, I think that what I would recommend is, I mean, we can have another workshop, but I think the work that needs to happen is really between the jurisdictions, and, and I would suggest that FORA staff engage directly with either the individual jurisdictions, or pull a group of them together, have a facilitated conversation, because a lot of these issues are going to have to be worked out by the jurisdictions anyway, and I think they probably are thinking about some of this stuff, and can help come up with what are the things we can work out contractually... with what are the things we can work out contractually. Anyway, I think a lot of problem solving can happen with the people who are going to be responsible for a lot of this anyway, and getting them started now. You know, our Board of Supervisors goes dark in August. So I think getting these conversations with staff going, getting a framework laid out, then you're going to have something that the jurisdictions can give a nod to, and that then can come to this Board before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edelman?
Yes, I agree with Mayor Gunther when he's talking about the fall-in organization being the land use jurisdictions, along with hopefully C issue and B. And I agree with Supervisor Parker about the issues that are, that are coming up. It should be acknowledged, I think, that since I've been on the Board, the hardest working directors here are the ones that come to these meetings, have made the most valuable contributions, in my opinion. In many cases, it's been the non-land use jurisdictions. They don't have a stake in the game. They volunteer, they come here, they work their tails off, and they make very good contributions. They're also, it should be noted, I think, the most pro-development community. The ones that aren't on the five, the ones that really push to try and have moderate development out there so we can pay our bills are those non-land use jurisdictions. And I'm a little concerned if we do go with the, the five land use jurisdictions and C issue and B, after the November election, looking at the tea leaves on the road, I could envision a situation where the FORA Board becomes totally, almost totally non, no growth. And if, if the Board has a no-growth attitude, my city or any other city that wants to develop out there and fulfill the, the base reuse plan is going to be stymied from doing it. So I would hope that we will, we will not allow the Board in the future to have a consistency determination where at a whim they could say, no, you can't develop that.
Thank you. Ms. Morton?
So I have just a question about, we spend a great deal of time talking about the CFD fees. And to the Habitat, I echo the support of the idea of let's get that JPA together and get, get moving on that quickly. We currently have 24,000 per residential property, rough numbers collected as the CFD. In your slides, which we had a whole lot of them, but they included 12, 13, 14, where you're going through all the funding, and how much of this obligation of 194.5 million being the CIP, and being dependent upon the full buildout of the CFD. What's not included in today's discussion is that FORA's revenue sources also were the land sale revenues, that then if in fact FORA devolved, is that the jurisdictions would have land sale revenues to apply to blight removal and/or any of its wish list that is part of the base reuse plan. We also would have returned, which we don't have factored in any of our graphing, in everybody's thinking here about how we do this, our property taxes, which in an earlier rendition created by Steve Inslee, this is a couple of years ago, that was two to three million that's currently going to FORA, would go back to the county, would go back to the jurisdictions. That would assist the county, for example, to build its roads, and the city of Marina to build our roads. And the special taxes, the tax increment, I think Marina and the county are the only ones that have previously obligated their tax increment. Ours is obligated to fulfill the base reuse plan function, which we will continue to do. But the tax increment will also go back to the jurisdictions to help defray these costs of fulfilling the plan. The membership dues, while they're not significant per se, per individual, there's also, MCWD's paying a $265,000 a year franchise fee. The ESCA is funded differently. So what I don't see in our analysis in this plan as it was put forth today, is how those additional monies help all of us reach the goals and the obligations which not yet are liabilities. But that's part of the consideration that I think my city would want to have. And I'm assuming everybody else is, is in that position. And the question that I have, I know of the 24,000 CFD currently, we put 30% aside into the Habitat. Do we have a formula about which we apply any of that specifically to roads, or to water augmentation? Or is that just set every year, which is my understanding, it's probably set every year, but I want the public to understand too, set every year by the CIP policy and the decision of our priority, is how we decide the application to roads or water? That's one question. I have another one.
Do you want to ask your other one?
So the other one that I have is that, while it's stated in here that all of these funding sources, the rural hurdle that you've identified in your program, but more importantly, you've identified it in this very lengthy thank you for the draft plan in its narrative format, was that there's the CFD. And you've made the comment in today's slides and in this program, is that going forward with a CFD is less problematic than imposing a CFD on the already entitled projects. And so the other thing that's not drafted in here, is the feasibility that if FORA devolved, that every jurisdiction can create its own CFD under Mela Rus, that's a state law, it's a tool by which we all have, that really what you've identified, at least in the TAC Committee and the previous renditions of TAC, was the stumbling block for the only funding mechanism that we really had trouble with, is how do we get the previously entitled projects to continue forward to pay their money? So I think that all of those considerations are something that are very important to us as a city. They're absent in a full understanding in this presentation, but I would think would be very relevant. And I also want to thank Alan, Director Hoffa, because you, you've come up with something for all of us to think about. And, and I appreciate the creativity of that thought about devolving everything that you can, and just retaining something very, very small, as to ESCA comes with its own funding, it has 6.8 million. The other thing that I don't think got referenced today, but has been referenced in TAC, is there was already a contract for the county to absorb the ESCA responsibility. So I want to make sure that we have what that language is. Thank you.
So I'll take a stab. The first, your first question is, do we have formulas inside the capital improvement program? No, we don't. We set aside 30% of the CFD fees for Habitat management. That's not actually in our CIP. That's a Board policy that was directed because of the magnitude. When it became apparent that the costs were going up, that better get, get on that. But in, in truth, the way that capital improvement program is set up, it's designed to allow the Board the flexibility to take the revenues that are gathered, and to review and analyze its priorities on an annual basis. So it can choose how to allocate the incoming revenues. So there's no actual formula, except by Board policy. With respect to your second question on CFD and new fees, one of the reasons we focus on that, it's not a matter of whether or not the jurisdictions can create a new community facilities district, they can. The issue has to do with whether or not that new fee, that new special tax, can be imposed on already entitled development. And that's why I said, with respect to those jurisdictions that have proposed developments that aren't yet entitled, the replacement financing mechanisms are actually easier to put in play and capture a replacement revenue source than it is for the city of Marina, for example, or the county of Monterey, to generate brand-new financing mechanisms. And with respect, there was a third question with respect to contract. I just put K for contract. Oh, the ESCA contract, that's what it was. And in that, you asked about whether or not, why, what, what agreement designated the county? It does, it's the ESCA agreement actually designates who the potential successor entities may be. It's actually one of four entities. It's the county, it's the city of Marina, the city of Seaside, or a JPA which is established. That is in the existing contract that we have regarding the ESCA services. So it's not just specifically the county.
Thank you.
So if we're kind of going around the table here, thank you very much. Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
So I, I really want to see us move forward, and I think that we're getting someplace. But what I'm thinking we should consider is, we have another meeting scheduled for July 13th. I'm just wondering if there might be the possibility for the city of Seaside, the city of Marina, and the county to pull together key staff people, the city managers in our, in our group, of course, I'm happy that John Dugan and Wendy Strimling here today, and our county administrative officer. If we met on our own to determine what it is that we will accept, or that we want to do, within the sort of broad presentation that we've had here, so that when we come back on the 13th, we have something that's a little more solid on what we all will agree to do. And then I think we would be in a better position to start determining, okay, so now we know that this is going to be sort of in place. And then we can really move forward with something that's real. I, I appreciate, and my, my, my yuri, and I spent a good deal of time on the, the written language. I thought we were going to go over that today, but it's clear that we're not. And there's a whole lot in here that just was not discussed within the, within the TAC. And that kind of troubles me. I don't think that we should have editorial comments, or things that really were not part of what it was that we had discussed. So that's something that we're going to have to figure out what, what to do about. But my, my real point is that I think separately, we need to come to get, we need to get together with our, our staff and determine what we want to do, what we can agree to do, what we can do, maybe even a little bit about what the vision we have will be for the future of this whole piece of property, not an entity called FORA, or a JPA, but the whole piece of property, and then come back together. So on July 13th. And I don't know if that's realistic, but I kind of think it is, because if we want to get this really moving and coming to closure, then we need to do that.
So my city manager is willing to meet with your city manager?
Okay, Ms. Morton, excuse me for just a moment. Excuse me. There, this will also go to the Administration Committee next week. And my understanding is that you do have another Board session scheduled for July 13th. So I'm sure there's going to be administration discussion. I'm sure there will be your staff discussions, whatever. I would also strongly encourage you to send comments in by June 25th, so that there can be follow-on. And for particularly the July 13th meeting, it's also my understanding that your Board set these dates and times as how you wanted to proceed. So are there, there is another comment. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to overlook you.
Thank you. And I'm mindful that we're wrapping up. So I, this is sort of in the nature of a wrap-up. And I appreciate your point about smallest possible footprint. I like that idea. But I want to make sure that in, in doing that, we don't lop off the sort of moral responsibility to make sure this all comes out fair for all parties in the long run. And I think in your discussion, as you're bringing people together about what you can do, what mechanisms you can really work on, that they are mechanisms that are equitable for all parties, whether they've been, you know, entitled or whatever. And I just think that that would be the best possible outcome for all of us to be paying attention to. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for being here. It's a long day, and we've gone over a lot of information. Some of us have seen this over and over, and different iterations, but the rest of you haven't. And I know it's a lot to digest. But you now have the information that's been presented. And I want you to, you know, take some time, look it over, write down your questions and ideas, think outside the box, and present them to, to staff so that they can coalesce them into another presentation. By no means is the workshop on the 13th, you know, the end-all, be-all. There's still a lot of work to be done. Hopefully we can get it done in a pretty expedient fashion. But I want to thank Candy for, for your work. Thank you very much for guiding us through this process, keeping us focused. And with that, I want to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and get ready for the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. And just, just to follow up or reiterate, in terms of those public comments, you can email, don't forget the email address is planning@fora.org. That is the best way to get us your, your comments in writing. So that's the easiest way for us to access it and act on it. So thank you again.